All right, we'll begin. We'll start the regular city council meeting Tuesday, August 24th at 7:00 PM. The City Council chambers, 2434 Vermont Street, Blue Island, Illinois. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
In the United States of America, to a greater republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Aldra Montoya.
Here.
Alderman Rita.
Here.
Alderman Fairwell.
Here.
Alderman McGee.
Here.
Alderman Carr.
Here.
Alderman Roll.
Yes.
And Aldair Bolanos. I'd like to honor.
Okay, thank you. We can start with a motion to approve the City Council minutes from August 10th, 2021. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Fairwell, is there a second? Second by Alderman Roll, on the question. Alderman Fairwell.
A minor correction under Mayor's announcement. The fourth item, the State of the Amazon Light Years received a check.
We received the check.
We received, yes.
The City of Blue Island received.
I hope we weren't paying.
No, no, no.
Come in here.
Now we're playing catch-up with the other spots that are filming, so. All right, we can make that change.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, will the clerk please do the roll?
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Motion, Currie, thank you. On the public comment, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. How was everybody tonight?
Good.
It's a hard job being an alderman. And if you want to do it right, it takes a lot of your time, a lot of reading, a lot of research. And we appreciate your efforts that you're making here. Some people call open debate bickering. Some people call it bickering. Mike Madigan calls it making sausage. I said he makes sausages when he says. I call it transparency. What we need here is more transparency. Alderman, what can you tell me about the $15 million supposedly coming to Blue Island? Mayor, can you say anything about that?
I addressed this shortly at our last meeting and don't have too many details until the state reaches out to me.
And do they say what we can use the money for?
I'm waiting for more details from the state.
Having separate planning and zoning committees is simply a check in the value system. This might not be a fast process, but it does have safeguards in it. For example, a facade temple building, that project came through, I don't recall who was the public here. Cook County could have taken over Metro South for what they paid for that boondoggle. The problem is not having a separate planning and zoning committee, but the problem seems to be political corruption and high taxes. How can we reconcile the fact that some members on the zoning board were removed, were no longer on planning and zoning? What is happening here with the four independent aldermen, with not the city allowing them to have their own attorney? The Rita faction, they have their own attorney. That was given by Mayor Vargas. Mayor Vargas was very kind about that. The four independent aldermen here have acted, acted all in good faith. They tried to work with the mayor. And the independent aldermen, it's time for them to demand respect, I think. Some ways you could do that, you just won't know on everything. But there's stuff to think about, and I hope to get your own city attorney soon because it's only, it's only fair. It's only a fair thing to do. It's fair for the Rita faction, and it'd be fair for you. And I like to say I do stand forward with the first responders. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, we'll move on to, there's no old business, new business, we have reported city officials under the mayor's business. We have a motion to approve payroll for August 20th, 2021, in the gross amount of $349,626.56. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Rita, is there a second? Alderman Carr, on the question. Alderman Fairwell.
I'd just like to ask a question about the funds that we're receiving in from the movie folks. Could those funds be used to pay the city administrator and the deputy city administrator of a way of retaining the funds in the, in the other line item that we're currently taking them out of?
What, what, what money?
The funds that we're receiving from Light Years for their fees for, I guess it's $10,000 a day or something like that. And I, it's-
Oh, from the filming?
Yeah, it's found money as soon as I can tell.
I'm not sure. I can look into it.
All right, I appreciate it.
Any other questions on the payroll? If not, will the clerk do the roll?
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Seven ayes, Your Honor.
Motion, Currie, thank you. Number two, we have a motion to approve accounts payable for the amount of $209,569.19. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alderman Rita, is there a second? Alderman Roll, on the question. Will the clerk do the roll?
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Is that no?
No.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Six ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have historical preservation appointment. There was a vacancy left by Alderman McGee's transition to alderman. Stephen Carr reached out to me. He was previously on this board, so I would put his name forward as an appointment. I figured he could flow right there. He was on the board for many years. Someone asked for a rat, do I need to ratify this or just an appointment?
Just an appointment, but it doesn't exist.
Yeah, so we need a motion for appointing for the vacancy of Stephen Carr for historic preservation. Alderman Roll, is there a second? Alderman Montoya, on the question.
I may have misunderstood, perhaps, who's going to go fill in the role?
Stephen Carr.
Okay.
Yeah, he previously was on the board for many years. It was an easy one, I think. He's familiar with the rules regarding what that applies and the, I think it's called the, I was on that board, COB, I think, or certificate of, certificate of, not certificate of, you can see, but it's historic structures, old western, they have to go through the board first. Alderman McGee, I don't think he knows more, he was recently on there. Certificate of- It's a step for historic properties to go before they get a bill. Certificate of appropriate. appropriate, that's, thank you, Alderman McGee. The clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Alex Dean.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Six ayes, Your Honor.
Motion, Currie, is number five, no, number four. Number four, we have city engineer appointment. I brought forward Burke Engineering. Before I ask for a roll call for this, I'd like to invite them up to discuss grant opportunities with their grant writers, who I found out at our first meeting. Parents live on Anne and sister lives on Greenwood. I did not know that, but please come on up here if you want to briefly describe, introduce yourselves and talk about the stuff you're already in the works of looking into applying for.
Thanks for having us, Mayor. I'm Travis Bray from Christopher Burke Engineering. Dr. Burke teaches at UIC on Tuesday nights, so we apologize if he cannot be here. We do have plenty of experience with the grant opportunities and we have a specialty firm, Metro Strategies, that helps us out with those, and Tammy is here to talk about those tonight.
Thank you, Tammy. I remember, I know her sister actually very well, she lives up on, I think, the Fifth Ward. I think actually both your parents and yourself, their sister lives in the Fifth Ward, but I did not know, and she didn't give me a heads up you were coming to meet with me, and I'm upset with her with that.
I'm Tammy Kohler-Worziek. Grove in Blue Island, family still lives in Blue Island, I unfortunately don't anymore, but I work for Metro Strategies. We are a subconsultant to Christopher Burke Engineering. We provide grant services to their communities, so we submit a lot of grants every year. We provide summary sheets to let communities know what grants are available, what the details are, deadlines, and then we assist the engineers in completing them. We have a very long, extensive, positive record in helping towns secure funding. I pride myself in building funding. I helped one community completely fund an underpass recently, and it's now under construction. It went from a pipe dream to reality, and that's now under construction west from Spring. So I look for as many opportunities as I can and work with engineers to find and submit as many applications as the community would like.
Thank you. Alderman, have any questions?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
As far as the demographics of Blue Island, how, in comparison, how many grants have been secured in the city's census district?
The nice thing is, Blue Island does qualify as, under CMAP, as a cohort core. There are census blocks that are low to moderate income, and with the demographics that it is, it does help boost your scoring. So we do apply that in everyone. We have a lot of Cook County communities that we've helped, so a lot of similar communities that have similar census tracts and demographics.
So on average, how many grants, is what I'm saying?
How many grants.
Do you feel about, many grants or there's money, are you the one that we satisfied with?
The city of Berwind last year, I got about $35 million in green infrastructure grants, in just one year. I'm very familiar, I come from the Council of Mayor's program, which you all are part of, and I ran the Service Transportation Program, so I know how to do those applications very successfully as well. But just for that one community, it was like $35 million. We help submit some applications for the federal earmarks that are coming up that are listed currently, haven't been formally approved, but I do have projects in that as well. Overall, we do even bigger, we do everything from small communities to large rail infrastructure grants with the federal program. So like the CRE program, I don't know if you're familiar with that, that's the rail P3 private partnership that does rail projects all over. We're doing those applications, so those are millions of dollars, and we do everything down to 5,000 private grants, state grants, federal grants, regional grants.
So it's just going to keep on, you know, essentially working pretty much, is it possible for the, you know, council to open certain grants, you know, with the purpose of, talking about rail?
Yeah.
And probably fix the streets on your county block?
I can assure you, that's one of the worst streets in town. That North Greenwood Avenue on 120th Street is pretty bad.
Well, Mayor, I understand.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, it might seem kind of facetious, but it was, it was serious.
So every time a grant opens, we do a summary sheet that we provide the engineer that he would provide the community and discuss with the community and go through it. And then we look at the deadlines and see if that's something that you all understand.
So it won't be like, you know, you're doing this on a table today, and you got to go on for tomorrow?
No. As soon as the, they're called NO-BO, Notice of Funding Opportunities are released, we start working on it, it's maybe been a week or two, we get it to Burke Engineering, and they distribute it to other.
Second, very much.
It's a nice summary sheet that gives you all the, it'll tell you if there's a lot of ours, in case you want to join as well, to see what's going on, what's eligible, not eligible, funding max and minimums.
I have a quick question. How many employees does Burke have?
For our primary company, Christopher Burke Engineering, we have about 250.
250.
Okay.
And would we have a representative at our committee at the whole meetings?
By any chance?
With any projects that are coming up, just like Robinson, I'm sure yourself or Tam will be attending the meetings to describe the projects, yes.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion to ratify my appointment of Burke Engineering?
Make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Rita, is there a second? Second by Alderman Montoya, on the question. Alderman Fairwell.
Okay, I get it, just a brief statement.
Maybe I should sit down, I don't want to hold you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a brief statement I'd like to read before we take the vote. I will be voting against the appointment of Burke Engineering tonight because what the mayor might consider to be an expedient shortcut could come across as deceptive to the city's residents and the city council. It is likely to reduce trust in both him and the city attorney. First, the mayor announced the appointment of Burke Engineering at the July 13th meeting without the advice and consent of the city council, as is required by the Illinois Municipal Code. Second, when the mayor was asked if he had the authority to do so without council approval, he responded, quote, "It's my appointment and no ratification is needed." Third, the city council, the city attorney was at his side and raised no objection. At the next meeting on July 27th, when the city attorney was asked if she concurred that the mayor was not required to put Burke's appointment up for a vote, her reply was, "That is my opinion." Finally, in response to a request for a written opinion from the city attorney, the aldermen were provided with an opinion that stated, quote, "The city of Blue Island has created an office of city engineer to which the city's mayors have consistently and regularly appointed Robinson Engineering without objection from the city attorney." The whole truth was contained in the voluminous city council minutes that were attached. They showed that the city attorney never objected to the appointment of a city engineer because those appointments were always and always had voted on by city council. These suspect actions are likely to degrade the credibility of the city administration in the eyes of the people of Blue Island. That is why the appointment of the city engineer should be made through an open process, which includes a request for qualifications of multiple candidates and a selection process that is fully transparent. After all, if there's nothing to hide, why make it look like there is? Let's keep the people's trust by voting no on this matter tonight. There is more than enough time to do this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Can you come back to me?
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
No.
Alderman McGee.
Nothing against Burke, but no.
So, what's that?
No. No.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Five ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number five, the ordinance number 2021-29, an ordinance of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending Title IV, Chapter 95, the Code of Blue Island, Illinois, regarding chronic nuisance properties. I know there's a lot of questions by one of the aldermen, and I also had some questions too that were answered, but I'll ask this to vote to vote. If there's any further questions, as always, on the question, we can debate it. Is there a motion? Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Fairwell, on the question. Alderman Fairwell.
Yeah, I did have several questions which were-
I did too, so I'm pally.
Mostly well answered, and thank you, Mr. Bolton. A couple of remaining questions, points. One is that under Section 9559 fees, my impression, and I'm just kind of coming out this a little bit, you know, ignorance, I guess, but the fees seem a little low. Tom pointed out in his note that these fees would be in addition to, I guess, inspection costs or other costs, so it wouldn't be just the fees alone that would be incurred by, you know, someone who needed to pay them. But I, I don't know, I don't have a good judge, I guess, just sitting here, whether these fees are appropriate or not, so I don't know whether it's something that we can, you know, return to or look at and talk about.
I can tell you, Alderman, I had some of the similar questions you did, and we need to look at our entire fee structure. I mentioned before, it's $25 for a gaming machine while other towns are charging $500, so I think we need to revisit, revisit our fine and fee schedule altogether in a separate conversation. I do agree.
Okay, well then, we'll come back to that.
Then I'm sure it'll be a lengthy, I think I, we started that, I think I sent that out to you guys?
Yes, you did.
A lot of that stuff are very archaic.
Yeah, we have a long list of fees, yes.
So this would be in addition to what's in there, and we have to bid this conversation on the entire list.
Okay, all right. And then the second item, the other item I have to ask about is 95.61. There's a procedure here for kind of a police, I guess, almost a, some kind of a counseling or mediation process, and the language in this section just seems really soft. There's a lot of words, you know, that this don't really give the police department a lot of specific guidance, and it concerns me that this could, you know, put them in a difficult position and also possibly, you know, raise the potential for legal action against the city if it seems like we're being arbitrary or malicious in our actions. So I don't know, maybe that section, you know, could be revisited and maybe struck out of this and, you know, have a look at, taken it unless someone has another comment to make.
Does the chief have anything to add to that?
Hold on a second, I'd like the attorney first because a lot of these same concerns I have also, so do you have an answer for that issue?
Yeah, in regards to 95.61, this is, I've seen in other, seen in other communities, what it is being used to do is provide the residents with a mitigation plan if they have what's been determined a chronic nuisance property, so that's one of those properties that has three or more issues within a six-month period. But say, there can be so many circumstances in which we might need to mitigate something for a resident, and that's why the language is soft, as you termed it. It's very difficult to predict all the circumstances after which a resident might need to ask the police department for mitigation plan in this regard, so this is how it's written in many communities. I don't foresee this as being an issue legally solely because this is kind of, this would be step one. And if the mitigation plan didn't work, then they would move through to the adjudication with the hearing officer, and then if they didn't like our hearing officer's ruling, they would be able to have it reviewed in circuit court. So this really just is for the residents that may need it. It can be deleted if you guys don't think it's necessary.
I like having the stuff that you explained it, of having that process where we can work with an owner, with maybe, or there, for example, like a landlord like myself, I might want to be involved in this to get rid of a bad tenant or something crime-related, so I'd like to work with the city. So you might have one party that wants to work with the city, while the tenant who's at legal address is fighting us, I think the language would help us, you know, come to the best outcome for the city.
So if I could just understand that, then there's this sort of mediation, if you will, that the police can help with. At the conclusion of that, if the parties are dissatisfied with the police, what the police come up with, then where do they go after that? What do you have to do after that?
So at that time, they would go to our hearing officer.
Okay, so there's a next step.
Yeah.
What goes back, yes, what we do now with the code enforcement hearings. All right, thank you.
Any other questions regarding this motion? Alderman Johnson.
Yes, Mayor, here's a question. Why, if it's not criminal, anything that may true? I believe that building department should be more or less policing this type of, you know, thing, and, you know, giving up these, uh, obviously, the other things more or less for protecting certain, you know what I'm saying? Like having an inspector ride around and then to see about, you know, nuisance properties, and if it's criminal, if it becomes criminal, then therefore have the police department, you know?
I don't think, I don't think we're using a strong word of criminal, like crime is maybe-
Well, I'm just saying, you know-
I think, like, for example, right now, our billing department and the police department, they have a code enforcement officer that have, they work on a daily basis together. The chronic ones, like we, I don't want to be specific, at the city council-
Right, well, right.
-that are ignoring the billing department, police actually has authority, the billing department doesn't have just by statutes.
And that's more or less, I guess, was the question, you know what I'm saying?
So when we get to this level, which is very severe, right, this would always involve the police department at that point.
Okay, okay.
But we're talking, regular code stuff's still handled by the billing department.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Now, clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Seven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six, we have a resolution, the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing and approving a contract with the City of Chicago relating to the City of Blue Island water supply, as discussed in the committee. This is just right boilerplate from them. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Roll, second by Alderman Carr, on the question. Now, clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Seven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven, we have Resolution 2021-37, a resolution of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing a request for proposals for the sale and disposition of city-owned properties. I had the same concerns as an alderman earlier today. There is a lot of city-owned properties that isn't actually owned by the city, they're owned by the land bank. I'm not sure if you got that same answer-
I did.
-on some of the stuff, so I didn't know that either.
Yeah.
So that's why this list is kind of shorter than I expected it to be, but at the very least it's a start. I'm also going to add that we should work with a resident realtor if he feels comfortable, and if there's a best way to put it out there, I'm all for it, I just want to get the liability off the city. And our maintenance department, our billing department, Public Works, maintaining a lot of these, let's just be going, because the process to sell these, if we can, is going to take months. So this is just putting them out to sale, we still would have to approve bids that come in, and there's legal requirements where we have to sell at a certain creative value anyway, that we'd have to get into on the boat squad when they do this, and Mark Miller knows all about that stuff. So that being said, is there a motion? Alderman Fairwell, Alderman Johnson, a second, on the question. Alderman Fairwell.
So I just would like to say, for the record, the benefit of my word, the property that I am interested in is Greenwood College, so it's now a vacant lot. Also could make a play a lot out of it potentially, but in any event, it needs attention. Thank you.
Go ahead. Alderman Johnson, and then Alderman McGee.
You sure did.
Go ahead.
Question is, like, you just said you could go out to, like, different realtors, so are we going to, like, say, if we got realtor A, B, C, and D, and we chop it up?
No, I was thinking more about Alderman McGee brought up earlier, because we've got to be efficient in this, and I don't think we can favor one realtor over another.
Right.
There's got to be an efficient reason. I think, like, there's a government site that I think my school district uses to dispose that I think my school district uses to dispose of property. Something to that effect, on top of our social media and everything we do in-house, anything above and beyond to get interest in these properties. Because at the end of the day, our goal as a city is to get these back on the tax rolls and get the maintenance and liability off the city.
Okay.
And a lot of these are just vacant lots, actually, you know, so.
So if we could have some, maybe some verbiage put into that, maybe stating that, that would be, that'd be great, if we can put that in there, stating that, you know, we're going to possibly auction off these properties or utilize some kind of online site.
I think that's the intent, and if we don't do it, not approve and sell. I think, I don't know if we could legally add that. This is just a standard ordinance to dispose, right?
There's, right. It's a very step-by-step process that we have to follow in terms of what notice we provide and what verbiage we put in the notice. But once we put it into the newspaper, we can distribute it as well. So I think that's where you're getting at. You would like to distribute the notice to several different outlets, correct?
Yes, I would like, you know, to utilize online to get as much exposure as possible.
So once we get the notice out, which will start Thursday, I will have our clerk also email you the approved notice that went in the paper, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
We don't want the same thing. We want the best place for the city and back on the tax rolls. All right. Was there a motion? A second?
Just to clarify, if I don't make the motion, was it backwards?
Johnson. Uh, Fairwell, then Johnson.
That's my thought.
All right. Any other question? Now, please do the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
And Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Last, under my business, we have motion to award Tiff 5 Streets Resurfacing Bid to M&amp;J Asphalt Paving in the amount of $283,942.50. This is an old project Robinson's headlining this, along with a few others that are going to be coming down the pipe very soon. We need a motion in a second. If there's any question, Tom is in the audience. So we need a motion. Motion Alderman Fairwell is our second. Alderman Roll, any questions?
How was M&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company, how were they obtained?
Tom, it's the same question as you, as I'm assuming, but you want to explain it.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Tom Nagel with Robinson. They were obtained through a public advertisement. They were also pre-qualified with IDOT in order to do the work.
Okay.
So there was three bids taken. There was three people that bid on it, and they were all pre-qualified with IDOT.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions while Tom's up there? Thank you, Tom.
Can you remind me which street was this again?
These are one-block streets of, between Vermont and Grove, like Coin, Seeley.
Oh, that's right.
Chatham. It's a bunch of one-blockers. Because Grove was done, Vermont was done a few years ago, and these were like the between the two, the Tiff project. But this was held off last year because of COVID, like everything else. The engineering was already complete. Any other questions? If not, we can do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Other mayor's announcements. Keep brief. I'd like to start by sending our thoughts and prayers to the family of the Eisenhower student who was struck by a vehicle this morning. Our police officers have been in touch with the family and were told the young man is in stable condition, but did suffer a number of injuries. So we'll keep him and his family in our thoughts. This is the second student to be struck by a vehicle along 127th Street this year. 127th Street, Baroque Avenue, is owned and maintained by the Illinois Department of Transportation. So the city has limited options on what we can do with the street. That being said, we have reached out to state officials and continue more in-depth discussions on what could be done to make the entire stretch of road safer for our students. My office will provide updates to the council and the public as these discussions continue. I was there this morning, dropping my car off across the street to dealership when this happened, and I thought it was worse. Thank God it wasn't worse. But this is now the second student in less than one school year that we know of that's been struck in a bad, bad accident. So there's something that has to be addressed. I mean, just in my lifetime, I think it's been at least ten hits on that stretch between Memorial Park and Eisenhower High School that I can recall. And I'm sure there's many more that I do not know, because I was a privy. So we're going to have continued discussions. I know we've already, I know we're applying, and we have applied for speed monitors, but that's only the tip of the iceberg. I'm hoping one day we can get back onto two lanes or some kind of slower traffic, mediations along that road. But I'll keep the council appraised on where we get with that. But we'll start discussions with IDOT to do anything, because they control all the road from curb to curb.
But I just, you know, I know this is fraught, but it does seem like a, is there any place where a speed camera would seem likely to make sense, if that would be the spot?
No, it's one of the discussions we brought up temporarily. The chief has brought both our speed monitors on that stretch. But that's a conversation we have to have, if we can legally do that or not, yada, yada, you know how this goes with anything that we don't control. But all that stuff's on the table. Anything's on the table at this point. I know we can't chew it, but I thought throw some concrete barriers up, let the state remove them. You know, it's getting to that point where I'm getting frustrated at this.
No, Mayor, they, Memorial Park had that, we put that same area, you know, a certain stretch.
Yes.
You only can go so fast, and they had to have the cameras there as well.
We need to look into doing that, because our legalities are different, because we're not the same Chicago, we're not on rule. And I know we haven't had those in the past, but something we are looking into. Everything's on the table right now. Anything we can do.
But you know, when it comes to the safety of our own and our children, some things need to supersede.
I agree.
I agree. When you talk about the safety of people.
I agree. Like I said, I'd like to do stuff and ask forgiveness later if it's meaning to slow down traffic and continue safe to the students. I work in high school myself. I know how it is. They're on a busy street too, not as bad as 127. We have trains over there too, that are constantly jumping the tracks, just like we do at Eisenhower here. So it's either the trains are jumping, an accident to happen, the traffic's going too fast. There's some multiple issues of risk going on in one location now.
But when you keep them raggedy like the one on West.
Alderman McGee?
If we can possibly work with 218 to further the education with the students as far as jaywalking goes, I think that might also help out as well.
I agree. And I know our police department has already begun conversations on multiple issues with 218. It's part of it.
Yes.
All right. Second thing I have. On Thursday morning, this Thursday, I will be traveling with Treasurer Frosto and Alderman Matoya, both to their hometown of Villa Gonzalez Ortega's Acatecas, the region where the vast majority of our Latino residents trace their heritage. We will sign a sister city agreement with the city, as what we hope will be a beginning of fruitful partnership. We look forward to the educational, economic, and cultural opportunities that this partnership will bring. Blue Island is both home to home and abroad is a diverse and culturally rich community. This is one of many steps I'd like to do in bridging the gap with our communities. So I'm going out there. I'm paying for the expenses myself, and we'll sign the agreement on Saturday, and I'll come back on Sunday. That's the plan. I'm just letting the council know. As COVID-19...
What does the question, what does the agreement include?
It says we're sister cities, and we will work in partnership with each other in communication, education, the same resolution we passed here. As COVID-19 cases continue to rise across Illinois, I along with fellow elected officials are encouraging all eligible residents to mask up and get vaccinated to best protect themselves and their families and their neighbors, as well as help ensure Blue Island's long-term economic recovery. Vaccines have shown to be extremely effective in preventing severe illness and death from COVID-19. I encourage all residents who have not been vaccinated already, to consult with their primary care doctor to see if getting vaccinated is right for them. Additionally, effective August 23rd, Co. County Department of Public Health announced indoor mask mandate for all people ages two and older who can medically tolerate a mask. Please do your part and wear a mask whenever you are public in indoor spaces. Together, we can do our part to combat the highly transmissible Delta variant and help our community move past the pandemic to a full recovery. They did yesterday. Yes, they did, Alderman. That's all I have in the mayor's announcements. City clerk?
As of today, I believe all the ordinances, resolutions, and minutes have been updated on the website. We are now working on to have do the payroll and accounts payable and to our website. We've worked with the Lakeshore right now. They're coming out for one time free. We went through one of the rooms. We went through one whole room. We found all kinds of old electronics. When Bill came up, he said he wished these were here years ago. There's things that he had no idea they were up there. So we're working with them right now to recycle and destroy all our old electronics. We have all, we have two rooms or three rooms emptied with old files, and we're working right now on the disorganization and destruction of that. When I campaigned for city clerk, we went to residents and we walked for months, people were concerned about the hours of the city clerk's office and the billing department. So I would like to change that with your consent. So if you have any ideas, like, for instance, if I answered the phone and somebody comes up and wants to get a birth certificate, and I would say that we close at four o'clock, they're like, well, there's no way they can make four o'clock. And they're, well, we come out on Saturday. I'm sorry, we're closed on Saturday. So I'm not sure what the correct answer is, but if you have a solution or an idea, please let me know. Email me, call me, stop in and see me. So that's something I like to do. Dog Days is this Saturday. I hope everyone comes out and supports. There's several businesses. Jackie Murphy's really heading the show. I'm just trying to support her. The vehicle stickers, I put one in front of you. It's an update on the vehicle stickers. Our police department's doing a phenomenal job. I would like to talk about, and the, our media as a whole, about the dogs next, because there's like no dogs registered, so that's another issue for, we all consider around and talk about that. So that's something I'd like to talk about. I emailed, there's a block party on September 5th, 2508 Collins. I believe that's Alderman McGee's ward. I sent you an email on that. The welcome bags are, we're starting to make progress. I have like three businesses that have already dropped things off. I will send, I will email you a letter tomorrow, just to inform you a little bit more detail, and if you would like to participate. Other than that, I think that's all I have.
Can I ask one question?
Alderman Fairwell.
And really, this is not directed just at the clerk, and today it struck me. In my experience, from what I've heard from my constituents, this is across the city. The phones are largely still not being answered, and calls from our nappy.
See, no, and I find that really, really hard. When I worked all summer there, I was there like longer than eight hours a day. I would make sure before I left, and that's my phone, that there was no calls. There was like no messages.
And I don't know where all these people are calling, but I can just tell you, everybody who's contacting somebody, I've tried to contact the city numerous times.
Really? That really surprises me.
And I don't know where they call to answer. I'm not laying this on your...
No, I, I...
Well, I know we had issues at the beginning of the summer, like the billing department. They were, I went over there and answered phones for one day because they had nobody working. So now they're slowly, you know, filling the billing department. So if it's been in the last two weeks, I'm really surprised. But I will make sure that I talk to all the girls tomorrow and just remind them to make sure that they don't leave without answering their phones.
Like I said, this is across departments, from my experience.
No, and Alderman and I have heard a lot of the same, and it's just, it's a big problem we're working on fixing. Just to give an example, just billing department one, I was talking to someone. I think it's just because they're used to this as an issue and they want to complain about it. Someone said, hey, I need you to help me with the billing department, because they told me it's three weeks for me to get a permit. I said, what did you talk to? I talked to him the other day. When I actually got to the bones about it, it was a month ago he went there and talked. It was a different host staff that was there, you know. So it's, they're just used to being disappointed. Or there is issues where numbers are incorrectly being called. I got a friendly call to thank me about something. They called a different line. It's not the mayor's line that's on the website. I just, they had it listed as a mayor's line. So if it was a mayor's line 10 years ago, I don't know. And it wasn't being answered, and they said, you never returned my call. So that stuff does happen. I know we're working on it. It does hurt me too, that the biggest thing is to answer phones. I think that's, we want to be heard.
Please let me know. You've heard it in the next week or so. If you're here, call me personally, let me know, and I'll try to get to the bottom of it. I know somebody came in the other day and told me that, um, left because they said the old clerk was still on the message. And I know that I changed that personally. So I, maybe I could talk to Bill this week and see if we could go through each one and figure out if there's an issue or something.
Thank you.
I noticed, clerk, that even if it's all $50 a sticker, you sold over 600 more stickers than I should.
As of right now. Yeah, they're still, I mean, like, I think, I looked today, and I think they sold like 13 today alone. I mean, so they're selling some every day. Our book with the overnight, the resident parking, is getting kind of full.
Okay, thank you. City treasurer, I announced for him about the trip. No Treasury report, that's the first meeting of the month. City attorney?
The first thing up is ordinance number 2021-30, an ordinance of the city amending Chapter 72 Parking Regulations of the Code of Blue Island. This was discussed during the committee of the whole meeting.
So we'll do the same thing as before. We'll do a motion in second, and then we can talk about some issues of the ordinance. Is there a motion? Motion Alderman Roll, second by Alderman Carr on the question.
For a second. I think I have a question. Well, my question about this was that there's a, and I think this has been answered, I'm sorry, but there's a provision there for permanent overnight parking permit, and there just doesn't seem to be a good set of rules about how that's going to be handed out. I believe Tom Mogan said that you're going to work on that.
So Tom Mogan's the administrator. To date, what we have done is, in the clerk's office, if an individual comes in, I don't want to unpack the whole thing, but you remember we had these, you know, kind of made-up overnight passes that people were requesting. So to date, what we've done is have people give us the license plate, make them mark all of the car, their name, their information, what address the car is going to be parked at, and what is your reason for needing overtime parking, or permanent overnight parking. Probably 95, 99% of those are either they have a work vehicle, or they have their overnight healthcare, overnight, overnight home care got very increasingly popular over the last year. So that people have home care, it comes three nights a week, stuff like that. So right now, that's how we've logged it. That's how it is. It is pretty much at the discretion of the cities, by understanding, as to when we can issue these. But so far, I don't think we've seen a request that doesn't fall into one of those two categories. There could be a curveball out there. Someone has a different story of why they need it, but it's very reasonable. So that's why it's been. I would think that once we, and we could probably start this process sooner, I think we can take a look at the request list and probably come up with a list.
A list, right.
But we might want to leave it open for...
It's not, it's not hundreds of people, though.
No.
It's not. No, it's like 30.
But there's a, there's a few people there. So what happens is, if you come in and you fill it out, and it's got to be notarized. And so then I scan it to myself, then I email it to Chief Farr and Dennis, and they, that okay. So like, there's a few that Dennis has sent back. He says, this guy has, this person has 30 days, and this person, there's, he puts restriction on it. He doesn't just okay them all. So there's some people have, you know, some people say, you know, well, I don't know. Can you remember some of those ones you were sent back?
Oh, and then Reza, they're getting plates or something like that.
Yeah, they have, yeah. He says they have 30 days to get new plates. So he's given, you know, so we're working together.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Quickly, I didn't see any, anything in there regarding like antique vehicles. If we could possibly include something that had the antique, antique vehicles.
So as an owner of antique cars, we are in the ordinance right now, it's $5 a sticker for antique vehicles. If you have the city say to Illinois antique plates, it's $5 a sticker.
Right now it's $10.
Yes, but if it's, if it's, if it's inoperable, I've seen like a 1920s Buick out there, and I'm pretty sure that that's inoperable. So...
Then it would be just a ridiculous thing, right?
Would this, would the city then cause that resident to receive a fine or something like that?
There's a process for inoperable vehicles listed in here. They do receive notice in time to maybe put the car in the garage or get it somewhere else. It can't stay on the streets.
Or they just get the $5 sticker. This is, this is for, you know...
Okay. I just don't want to cause any inconvenience to certain residents. So, okay.
Again, I'm sure we can accommodate a resident in the meantime. Any other questions? If not, clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
No.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
No.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Thank you.
My advice.
Thank you. Number two?
Number two is ordinance number 2021-31, an ordinance of the city amending Title 7, Chapter 72, Section 14, Regarding Handicap Parking of the Code of the City of Blue Island. And this relates to what we discussed in the committee of the whole meeting regarding assignment, specific assignments of the handicap parking spot to the person who has applied for it. I'll make a motion.
Motion Alderman Rita is our second. Alderman McGee on the question. Alderman Roll?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion regarding this. Firstly, to the specific to write in the case, which grant the mayor, Alderman, I think it's a question, and initially, I thought that's a, and then you started to use the review. But finally, I think I'd like to have that written, you know, should we do in the future, whether we discuss or do that.
No issue. Is there a second to the amendment? Alderman Fairwell seconds the amendment. On the question to the amendment. All right, so we need to approve the amendment first, and then we'll go back and approve the ordinance, correct?
Can you, can you explain, can you say that again? Let's see amendment.
On moving the amendment, for the ordinance, so this allows people to designate handicap parking as daily permanent.
Right.
I think they provide specific discussion for the council and mayor to determine, you know, basically, if you want to stop, although it's the happy, not the evil. You know, too many people are applying to this level. But I think, reminder, you, you may get a better access, and too many people are being amended.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? This is to approve the amendment, then we'll go back and approve the original ordinance. So would the clerk please do the roll for the amendment?
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll. Seven eyes.
All right, motion passed for the amendment. Now we're back to the original motion. Your motion is second to approve the amendment.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Roll on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll. Seven eyes, Your Honor.
Carries. Next, we have...
Ordinance 2021-32, an ordinance of the city amending Title 1, Chapter 11 of the Code of Blue Island Regarding Administrative Adjudication. And as we discussed in the committee of the whole, this allows residents to pay fines or penalties prior to court so they don't have to attend the hearing.
Is there a motion? Alderman Rita is our second. Alderman Johnson on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll. Seven ayes, Your Honor.
Next is resolution number 2021-39, a resolution of the city authorizing and approving a proposal between the city and Axon Enterprise Incorporated. It's relating to the body cameras for the police department.
Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Carr, second by Alderman McGee on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll. Seven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have number five.
Resolution 2021-38, a resolution of the city authorizing and, and approving an agreement between the city and Enterprise Fleet Management relating to, uh, the leasing of police vehicles.
Again, I had the same questions as an Alderman, and it was clarified for me, but I think we do a motion and second, and I'm gonna invite, I think they're here, right? You're here tonight, okay. So we'll need a motion and a second, and I'll invite them up during the question. Is there a motion? Alderman Farinwall is our second. Alderman Roll, please come up, because I have some probably questions also. You want to reiterate yourself?
Yeah, my name is Reeve Hall. I'm with Enterprise, and this is Scott. How you doing? Also with Enterprise.
So I'm opening up. I know the Alderman had a question. Alderman Farinwall?
Yeah, it's pretty simple. It seems like we had asked to approve like, I don't understand why.
Yeah, correct. So this is just, um, an agreement. Nothing really happened until we, we vote on vehicles to approve this amendment. So it's just a big, it's just a length agreement.
So I, I. Okay, I get what you're saying. I would expect kind of that we would do this as part of our, you know, approval of leasing.
Yeah, we, we can.
I mean, I just, I, I just, it seems like, I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing. It just seems like a, and I.
Yeah, I think this is, this is gonna allow us to move a little quicker. The vehicle industry, as everybody knows, is very volatile. So with an agreement in place, if we all agree to the terms, by the time we select vehicles, we can move on them very quickly versus going, you know, proving agreement, proof of vehicles and stuff. There's, there's a, a lot of backend work that we need to do to the line of credit moving and stuff like that, so I think it's just gonna make us a little more.
Has the city attorney, you've been able to review this agreement?
I did review it, yes.
And it's, it's with your approval?
It does. It's, it's pretty boilerplate and standard, and it doesn't, um, it doesn't require the city to expend any monies or anything like that at this point.
It does, I mean, we're not committed to anything.
No, we're not. We're not even committed to lease any vehicles from that.
Yeah, you could execute a contract, and then nothing happens.
Just a thing of honor.
Correct. Yep. And, and is, this is, I think primarily gonna impact the police department, is my understanding. Uh, does this help you both?
Tremendous.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, I had the same question, Alderman Farinwall that I did, so you covered that. Any other questions from the Alderman?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, I see how this, this, I mean, I, I know the, our police department needs this. Um, I just would, just a word of caution, um, for overextending ourselves on, on something like this, because from the presentation, um, that in eight years, uh, we would exceed our budget. Um, I don't see this as being a permanent, uh, solution to, 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 to our problems, uh, but it does help us in the interim. Um, that, that being said, I, I would suggest, uh, using caution, uh, proceeding, uh, forward.
If I could just, Alderman Farinwall, just echo what you just said, and, uh, so probably just to say that the fact that we're approving this tonight, it's not a given that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna look at everything real closely.
Yeah, and we'll review it every single year, so.
Everything is gonna, and I already, I believe it's only the police department that's gonna take advantage. The rest of it, we have a state joint purchase program. We only buy one or two cars here and there for the other departments. I don't think it's valuable for the city to go into the agreement for that, except for the police department, just for the mileage usage alone. So I think this all has to be re-discussed before we actually go forward.
Yes, I, I just wouldn't like any, uh, future administration to be left holding the bag.
No, and then I can just say that.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? If not, we can do a roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll. Seven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you, and that's it for business. City Attorney have anything?
No.
All the mannequin announcements, reports, and comments, we do have to go into executive session after this.
Aye.
Alderman Rita?
Uh, in regards to marketing, um, so we received about a, um, twelve dozen responses to our, um, our P in June, and received all, um, uh, we received all of them. We had, uh, three finalists that were selected by, um, their quality and their work examples and their price. And the range was between 5,000 and 25,000. Here are three of the submissions. And this is for, um, a new logo. I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Um, and if you'd like to take a look at it here, or, um, they could be emailed by, um,
Can I get them tested?
And we could talk about this more at the committee of the whole. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Yeah, as you can see. You want to take. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other Alderman? Alderman Johnson?
Yes, we were talking about, um, the different numbers for the different departments. Yeah, we didn't have the business cards, our business card payment that was possible to get, you know, different parts of the numbers, you know, back of our business cards, and we had them out. Yeah, since we, you know, have a proper, uh, part of the.
Alderman Johnson, uh, you read my mind. I'm surprised we didn't talk about this. I did not even order any yet as a mayor. I did not order any business cards. My staff has not ordered any business cards. You haven't seen any accounts payable. I have the same sentiment as other people in town for, for many years, including the people that were behind it. I'd like a new logo. I, we have to find out how we're gonna pay for it, go through it, the vetting process, but I don't want to order anything with the old logo on it until we make that decision. The council decides not to make that decision, then I'll start ordering business cards, but I like the idea of putting all the numbers direct lines in the back of the carts at a minimal cost. People could put it on the refrigerator and keep it forever, and those would be the right extensions to call people right away instead of the general number. So I agree, Alderman, and please bring that up again if I do forget, but I brought that up myself as a possibility when I ordered my future cards.
So why are you so generous right now? Maybe I can make another suggestion.
I just don't like that a logo I never have. It screams water company. I'm sorry we overdesigned it, but I, it's not a city of Blue Island that I remember. My old logo with the BNI was nice and strong, with the I inside the V, city stickers for a hundred years. I was just out of town last weekend. I was wearing the firework shirt that we just made, we didn't make, but the vendor made, and had the old BNI on the front, and the musician on the band said, and that's the only part, when you're sitting, looking at the stage, is that BNI. "We got somebody from Blue Island in the house." And I was like, I went up to him, "How do you know?" He's like, "That's the logo on the shirt," because it was on every city sticker for a thousand years, that logo. What we have right now is not iconic, it's not recognizable. Nobody sees that in, in Blue Island. So I was, an idea just to get proposals to bring to the Alderman. Not committed to anything, just see what's out there.
Because at one time, didn't we have like the, uh, students or something in the school district, they were supposed to do the competition for making?
They did, uh, city stickers back in the day, but at the time, it was under Don Pollock, when they, they advised not to do that anymore for legality reasons. So we can look into it again, but there were some examples sitting right back there. I think they're about a city sticker. I think they were in the middle of what the city picked that year. But they were advised not to do it.
And the Otis was a good idea too, the logos that they had on their shirts. I never did get a shirt from them.
Alderman's shirt.
All right, any other Alderman comments?
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, offer my condolences to, uh, our, uh, former Alderman, um, Jan Ossling for the loss of her son.
Oh.
Yes, I'm, uh, I didn't get any details back yet, but anyone announce anything officially? Um, but thank you, Alderman. Alderman Farinwall?
So, uh, I just would like to follow up on my objection to the hiring of the engineer to make it clear that it was not about her in particular, and I think, as the mayor knows, I'm all about following the law. And you have now approved the city engineer, and I just want you to know I pledge to work with them enthusiastically and look forward more to the, uh, now that there are city engineers.
We need a lot of work we gotta do.
I as well.
Thank you. Any other Alderman consent or comments? We do have executive sessions. We need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Johnson. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Those of you in attendance, we might be back there fifteen, twenty minutes. By all means, you can go unless you really want to stay, so I just want to let you know. There's two, two separate items we gotta discuss in the back. All right, we need a motion to reconvene.
I'll make a motion.
Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Farinwall. In the executive session, we discuss work that's top claim and, uh, ongoing ownership issue with some vehicles. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman Roll is our second. Alderman Rita, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.